This is not a public hearing, but we are going to take public comment. Mr. City Attorney, would you set the stage for me for the public comment?
Well, again, Mr. Mayor, as I stated at the outset, this is not a time for public comment on the merits of the proposed Target project, but rather, I would suggest that you solicit public comment on the proposal before the council for this public community impacts report. And so, any interested members of the public that wish to comment on the scope of the report and have any input on that should be invited to approach the podium at this time.
All right. Who would like to address us? Yes, come on up. Give us your name, where you live, and if you'd limit your comments to three minutes.
Steve Burdo. And Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year to you.
So, there's just a couple of points I want to address. One, I'd like you to know, I've been involved in community impact reports since 2002. I've worked on a number of them. One thing that struck me as odd to this was the, when the information was put in front of me, that the proposal was tendered 48 hours after the request went out, without a bid project. In every CIR that I've worked on, there was an open bid project. People bidded on the project. It was a very thoughtful process. They didn't just go with, you know, the first available resource there. So, I'd advocate for a more thoughtful approach to, you know, picking the firm. And not that Mr. Quinn's firm, you know, isn't what they say they are, and I'm sure they do a phenomenal job. I would just advocate for a more thoughtful approach. As to the direct data collection, that is actually something I think should be in the scope of work. Because that is how, and to answer your question, Councilmember Heller, that is how you're going to get that information from the Target employees, or any employees in the city of San Rafael, of how much they're being paid. In 2005, I undertook a similar project on a Walmart in Hartford, Connecticut, and we got over 600 surveys of workers in each of the different departments at that place, because they were doing the same thing. They were telling the city that, "That's proprietary information. We don't have to provide it to you." So, my organization, in partnership with the Working Families Party and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, went in and conducted those surveys. And it was very effective, and it was very, it was a respectable process. So, I do have experience doing that. If that is something that, you know, you want to go forward with AECOM, my firm, Kathleen Russell Consulting, is able to staff that part of the scope of work, if that is something that you'd like to do, the direct data collection. Again, I have significant experience in this. I am the political director and the campaigns director at the firm, and this is something we recently did for a supervisory candidate in San Francisco, who asked that we go out and get 800 surveys of the community to find out if he should or should not run for supervisor, in which we did do that. So, again, I'd advocate for a more thoughtful approach, possibly a bidding process and putting it out there to other firms, and also, very strongly advocate for the direct data collection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Barry Toronto. I am Senator Linda. I did not have to be here tonight, because I have to say that the city council members asked some very pertinent, entertaining, and informative questions and comments that I think allayed my fears about agreeing to this contract. So, I'm hoping in the near, very near future, that you actually start televising these meetings. I don't know why it hasn't started yet. It's already the new year, and I think you should expedite the process, so that many of us don't have to spend hours attending. But now that I'm here, I have some very important issues to come up with because of the fact of what's going on. And I have to say, that your staff report, terrible. Terrible, because the questions that you asked should have been included in the report, because they were glaring. First, the fact that, "Why was this consultant here on the 6th and the 20th?" It could have easily been answered by adding, by connecting the two sentences on the first page, by saying that AECOM actually conducted the urban decay analysis. Why didn't it say that in your report? It was not included at all. So, there's a lot of missing pieces to this puzzle, that were answered here tonight verbally, but should have been in writing. And it would have made it a lot easier. Plus, I disagree with the calling a professional services agreement. It's really a consultant contract, because it's a consultant providing a certain study. A professional services agreement is providing services to the city that staff can't do on their own. So, I disagree with staff, with the rhetoric or the vernacular and how you deal with this. And it should have been discussed and explained why you did not actually go out to bid. The staff could have made it very easily by explaining it, and it would have allayed a lot of fears, and I wouldn't have to be here tonight, as many of us wouldn't have. And I think that, as a result of this, the city council ought to set a ceiling on when staff is allowed to create, excuse me, to decide on their own contractor or consultant, rather than getting, going out to bid. There should actually be a ceiling, or it should be stated, that it was below that ceiling. Because I know in other jurisdictions, they actually state clearly that the contract's under certain amount of money, so therefore, we get to make the decision on our own, or we get to decide on a single-sell contractor. And I did go to the website for AECOM, and there's a wonderful website, and explains a lot of the things. And I think Alexandria Quinn did a great job of explaining his company. I do feel it should be part of this, is that the advertising that Target puts out in the Sunday papers now, actually includes a lot more food items than I've ever seen before in the past. And I think it's important that they include the marketing and advertising that Target does, as part of their economic study. I think it's important to show that, and compare to, God bless you, that other stores in the area do. I think it's a very important part.
Mr. Tanner, your time is up.
In closing, yes. In closing, I definitely urge you to employ staff, to write better staff reports, so that we don't have to ask all these questions in depth. And thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Mr. Moran, you're next, after this gentleman. Okay?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marty Bennett. I live in the town of Sonoma. I teach at Santa Rosa Junior College, and I'm also co-chair of the Living Wage Coalition of Sonoma County. My purpose is here tonight is to talk about the community impact report, and particularly the situation in terms of AECOM, and other issues that arose in the context of, in the city of Petaluma, in 2008, they passed a community impact report for a large commercial retail. The Living Wage Coalition was very much a part of a community effort that implemented that, and subsequently, three community impact reports on large projects have been completed in the city of Petaluma. We submitted a letter to you from our land use and planning consultant, Scott Stegament. He wasn't able to be here tonight. I want to circulate that letter to you again, and copies for staff. We have four or five important points we think it's important to put forward. First, Economic Research Association is a division of AECOM. AECOM is a global corporation that has extensive business and contracting relationships with Target. This is going to be the first community impact report for the city of San Rafael. It will be the first community impact report in the county of Marin. It's important to get this right. We think there should not be the appearance of a conflict of interest. And in our letter, we believe we provided you substantial documentation that there is indeed a direct conflict of interest. At the conclusion of our letter there, we provide you three firms that have experience with community impact reports and economic impact reports. Two are local, Keizer Marston Associates and Strategic Economics, and a third is Civic Economics. All of these firms would be very qualified and clearly impartial in terms of providing a community impact report for this target. We also outlined in our letter, we think the scope of work could be much more specific in regards to the retail market analysis and the trade area that's studied. And we also suggest in our letter, and let me tell you, our experience in Petaluma in 2009, when a CIR was performed by a consultant for the city of Petaluma for a shopping center on East Washington Street, Target would not provide their wage and benefit data. I think it is highly unlikely that they will provide it here. We have concerns, based on that experience, about the best practices for estimating wage and data sources, and we indicate quite specifically what we feel those are. And very briefly, Councilwoman Heller, there is extensive information in the public record about the wages and benefits at Walmart. And the reason for that is, is that the largest class action suit in American history involving 1.6 million women in relationship to gender bias at Walmart has gone forward, and beyond the Ninth Circuit Court, depositions then have been given. And if you go to the UC Berkeley Center for Labor Research and Education, you will find the pioneering studies on Walmart wages and benefits. I would submit that Target wages and benefits are very similar. Finally, we have a number of CIRs that have been implemented in other cities in California, including Santa Clara, San Jose, Los Angeles, and San Diego. I would like to provide you what we believe is model legislation, based upon our experiences in Petaluma and other experiences across California. We think it's important not only to have fiscal impacts and employment impacts, but also affordable housing, neighborhood and human services, and smart growth impacts. We think it's critical that policymakers have all of this information in one document in order to understand all of the costs and all of the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Herb Moran. I reside at 316 Jewell Street. First, I'd like to commend the council for getting the concept of a community impact report. Unfortunately, it seems what was laid out by staff and by AECOM is an economic impact report. I think that you very clearly distinguish the differences, and therefore, it doesn't seem even reasonable that you could vote on whether or not to approve them as the vendor to conduct this study. I do find it curious, despite the fact, I too have attended the planning commission meeting, as well as the two meetings for tonight. And there's been a tremendous amount of effort put forth on the members of our group, Keep a Local San Rafael, to try and assist. And curiously enough, no inquiry was made to any of us as to, in the assistance of formulating the parameters. So, I guess my question would be, who came up with the parameters that Mr. Quinn detailed, because they're clearly a small portion of what's actually contemplated in a CIR? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Helen Blough from Mill Valley. I hope that I can still speak on the subject, even though I'm a stranger. I think that what you have before you, although most of what you do is obviously very important, this really is going to have lasting effects. There's a situation in which you can't unscramble the egg, once you make a decision on this. I too am concerned about the parameters and scope of this study, and how they were determined. It seemed to me, in my past life, I did hire a lot of consultants, and sometimes, you have to be careful that they want to determine the scope of the study, rather than yourself. It seems to me that they did that here. I'm wondering why you're not requiring the distribution of the preliminary report to allow for public comments, for the council's benefit, before preparation of the final report? You've got a lot of people here who've spoken out, and when you get the preliminary report, at least, people will have the opportunity to comment on it before it becomes etched in stone, and you go through the formality of an approval. I was disappointed in some of what Mr. Quinn presented here, on behalf of his company. I was absolutely surprised that he couldn't answer the question about Target being a customer of other divisions. I mean, it's the kind of thing that you just ask, that the staff would even ask initially, and to come here and say, "Well, economics research, which we acquired in 2007, I really don't know about that, and I really don't know whether Target is, quote, 'could be.'" Those of you who are lawyers know that when a new client comes into an office, and the first thing you have to do is send it around, to make sure that the firm, not just that department, but that the firm hasn't had conflicts, hasn't done work for that particular client, that prospective client. And I have concern about the fact that he wasn't able to tell you what the, what possible conflicts there were with Target. I want to know, what's the rush? Why does this have to be rushed through as quickly as it's going? Is there something that's going to happen that's detrimental to San Rafael, that you couldn't follow the normal RFP process? I mean, it can't be that, in fact, what I've heard, obviously, economics, AE, is not the only company that can do this work. And I don't know why others weren't even invited. If it was contemplated that you're going to do a community impact study, at least have others invited to come to the meetings. And even if they don't, you have the hearings, and why are you rushing? I personally would like to know why. These studies are not so complex, they're done many, many times, they've been done, that other companies have done them, and so, it's not something that is exclusively, I think, within the genius of AE.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
The last point I would like to make is that I think that the words, that there are a lot of guesses and assumptions, that were Mr. Quinn's words. And he was asked a question about something that Mr. Brockbank asked him, and he said, "Well, it depends upon what side you're on." I think that kind of response is something that should give the council concern for the possible conflict here with Target. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. And first of all, I want to thank the council for creating this opportunity to bring forward as much information as possible, bearing on this very important decision, both for yourselves and also for the community at large. Sustainable San Rafael has submitted a letter on December 23rd that outlined some suggestions for the scope, and I will also submit my testimony tonight to the clerk, in the event that you should wish to refer the consultant to include some of these items. There are several ways in which we would recommend expanding the scope, recognizing fully that this is primarily an economic study, albeit, community impact is certainly a much broader term than that. But staying within the bounds of economics, there are, I think, three broad categories that summarize our concerns. One is, I would ask that there be included in this report, a serious discussion of the externalized costs of the big-box business model, or the Target business model. I think this is something of this scale that's unusual in our community, and we need to understand as thoroughly as we can, what's entailed in the business model of this particular business that's going to have such an impact on our community. So, those externalized costs would include touch-on items like healthcare, which has been mentioned before, consumer debt burden, which was mentioned in previous testimony here, the public subsidies that are really underpinning the cheap oil that allows business models like this to stay afloat. And what does that say about the not only possible impact here, but the long-term viability of this business model? And of course, bottom line, the impact of this large-scale business model on the more localized business models that we're hoping to encourage in a truly sustainable community. Secondly, there are opportunity costs in allowing this development to go forward, in terms of not concentrating, or losing the opportunity to concentrate large retail energy closer to existing business districts, where it could have a synergistic effect, and really help and assist the flow of customers to our existing businesses. So, there are opportunity costs that are entailed here. And finally, the one I really want to emphasize is San Rafael's portion of the local climate change adaptation costs entailed in this development. These would be costs needed to protect Target's considerable investment from the inundation and/or isolation, or islanding, of this site that's predicted by BCDC as a result of sea level rise. Staff stated at the last hearing that such costs could approximately $2 billion region-wide, to protect approximately $48 billion worth of improvements throughout the Bay Area. Well, if you pro-rata that back to San Rafael, it represents about 4% of the value of improvements. This is a $30 million project, so the cost to the city potentially, you know, might be in the range of $1,200,000. Who knows? I would like an economist's opinion and serious study of that in consultation with the expertise of BCDC and others that our planning director referred to in the last testimony. I think we need to bring this forward, not as an environmental concern, it is that, but also narrowly, as an economic concern. This community faces a potential of huge cost related to this development and any other development within the zone identified by BCDC, as subject to flooding, potentially within the next 30 years.
Mr. Carney, your time is up.
Okay. I appreciate that, and just my final comment would be that there's a nexus here to the community benefits package that's been alluded to tonight, and we have some recommendations about what could be included in that that would help address particularly sea level rise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Gail Nipell, 584 Woodbine Drive. I live, work, own a small business, and pay taxes in San Rafael. And I thought that we were asking for a community impact report, so I too have been a little bit perturbed by what I see as the scope of what has been proposed. But if we are limiting it to environmental impact, there are a couple of things that I think perhaps should be studied, which could be assistive and possibly even predictive to the overall impact of Target on our community. And that is to look at the economic impact of the actual construction of comparable Target projects. We understand that Target has said they would use local construction companies to do their building, and I think we can granularize that even further. We can talk to the local architect they hired to design the building. Or if they didn't, I think that tells us a lot about Target's intentions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It is getting late, so I'll make this very brief.
Could you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry, Jerry Biletto, 18 Wilson Court. Again, I thank you for allowing the opportunity here, and you guys getting behind a CIR. I think that's quite significant, not only for now, but for future projects. I'd like to remind you that our general plan and our climate change plan are both really visions of what many of us here in the audience have worked on, citizens have worked on, you all have worked on as well. It's a vision of what we want our city to be. And one of the things that consistently both these plans call for is densities near transit hubs. Now, it's one thing to go ahead and say we have transportation problems up there, but we are putting in a smart station, which is going to change and alter that picture. And it's a little unclear, probably to all of us, exactly how it's going to change. But I would like it if you could include in this CIR, some type of what-if alternative. If maybe Target was in a location closer to a transit hub, it would give us something to compare what some of those problems would be. And I would also like you to go ahead and see if you could do this over time. It's one thing to say that there's going to be an impact in the next two years, five years, but I'd like it if you could look at at least 30 years down the road on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Castellucci, and I live in Marinwood, but hope that I can still have a little opinion about this.
Of course, please.
I am still interested in clarifying the conflict of interest in this with AECOM, and that was why I came initially. And so, just to make sure, now it seems that there's, the parent company may have a relationship with Target. I'm not quite sure if I heard that correctly. But if we can get that clarified, and make sure that, what is the nature of their relationship? And additionally, I was listening to the, Mr. Quinn's proposal. He was talking about net benefit analysis. So, what I heard was, we're not drilling down to individual, small businesses, the impact on individual business, but the net benefit of a Target. But that could also mean that some of our small businesses may fail, but the net benefit still could be positive, but we would lose small businesses. And as a mom, you know, with a son in school, I know that small businesses help our community in other ways, like sponsor our Little Leagues, contribute to Can Do, and fundraising benefits for schools. So, is that going to be calculated? How much does Target put into local community projects on a consistent basis, in comparison to our local businesses, the small businesses, the Three Twins, the, you know, think about all the, what small businesses contributed to our communities financially that, you know, I didn't hear in this, in the scope of this study? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Phil Tucker. I'm Project Director of California Healthy Communities Network, TIDE Center. I really am concerned, I'm glad to see that we are moving forward on a CIR. I'm not exactly sure if the consultant is the right consultant, that's up to you, in your decision, your prerogative. But I am sure about one thing. Unless you consider the other Target that's sitting in your primary trade area, that's going to have an effect on the sales in this primary trade area, you're not going to get a complete picture of what the impact of the two stores in tandem will do to the retail, especially the grocery retail in this area. The reason I stress that is because you're dealing with a new model, that's new here, but it's not new in the back east. They've had them for a year. We have no real good data yet on exactly the percentage of sales that is non-taxable versus, and I'm talking about drugs, pharmaceuticals, and I'm also talking about groceries. We do know one thing, based on what they said last meeting, there was 350,000 transactions that are going to Nevada, or coming from the South County area. That's what they said. Of the 450,000, they said they reviewed. Now, again, now that if you put a store down this direction, what will that synergy be? That needs to be evaluated, because that's going to have to do a lot with your sales tax. Of course, some gentlemen will say, "Well, a dollar more sales tax is good." But again, what are you giving up for that dollar? And are you going to get what you're promised? And are you going to get what you're promised to get, or at least that was announced to you in your study, that you could expect? So I would urge you to please consider a study of the primary trade area, which includes the overlap of the Nevada store and the proposed San Rafael store in the study, because they play in tandem. The other thing is the idea of the charitable giving, and I think a couple people brought that up. The idea that they give so much, the thing, we need to see what Nevada has received in charitable giving from Target, since they've had a Target, what the local people have got out of it. Not the national picture, the local picture, the city itself. And we know that what they said is $10,000 came to schools here in San Rafael this past year. I presume that's correct. They wouldn't have said it probably if it was not. But that's a very small percentage compared to what local businesses are currently giving, as was testified to by Mr. Daniels about how much money his store provides in the local giving and participation in community events. At any rate, I urge you to look at the trade area as well as just the solitary store. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Jim Garrity. I'm not very good at math. I get confused with the Three Twins thing. That gets me. But what I do know is that I know that the, the race to the bottom is due to globalization. The middle class is gone because of that, and I think you all should know very well that our canal is populated because of globalization. So that should be one of your main concerns. As far as the health benefits, everybody talks about, are they going to offer the benefits to it? That's not the question that needs to be answered in the study. The question is, which employees can afford the benefits? How high are the deductibles going to be? If a person making $15,000 to $20,000 a year has a $5,000 deductible, they're not going to take the benefit, because they can't afford the benefit. And when you talk about community benefit, Park Hill Tunnel is a community benefit. Bike lockers and 10% discounts for bicycles bought at Target are not a community benefit. And I applaud you for doing this community impact study, but let's get down to some brass tacks on this and start really looking at what's going to affect the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Dana Phillips from San Rafael, and I have a concern that the data that he's using may be inadequate as far as population, because first, they're saying the census in California is maybe inaccurate. And second, I lived on 840 C Street, and I woke up at 2:00 in the morning because there was a jackhammer outside, because you don't know that there are 100 apartments there. It's zoned industrial, and there are a lot of buildings like that. You're actually undergoing a review of the city for rezoning, because you don't know what's in the city. And I don't know how Mr. Quinn can evaluate who's living here if you don't know. It might be worse in the canal. That was something else. Sorry. I can't remember the other thing. Anyway, I'm just very concerned that it's premature to hire a company to do this kind of a, an analysis when you don't have all the data in on who lives in the city and what kind of types of housing are around the Target that is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no one else, so that'll conclude with our last speaker. Don't break your computer.
Swinging my weight around. Okay.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
My name's Jonathan Freeman.
Thank you.
And I'm with Keeper Local San Rafael. I got a few quotes here. One of them is from Wendell Berry, who is a farmer in Kentucky, I believe, and writes an awful lot about community and large corporations. And the beginning of the quote is, "A good community ensures itself by trust, by good faith, and goodwill, by mutual help." And I looked just through this proposal by AECOM and couldn't find the word "community" anywhere in it. They're doing an economic impact analysis. It's not a community impact report. And in that regard, when I spoke with Damon just before, just right after the 20th, I thought there was going to be some sort of a scoping session where the community would be invited to give their viewpoint, where they could be invited to bring what they thought ought to be covered in this particular report. So I was shocked to find out that there was already something proposed two or three days after. It just didn't make any sense. And at least to the second quote that I found today by the comedian Lily Tomlin, which is that, "No matter how cynical you get, you can't keep up." And I'm quite discouraged. I thought there would be a scoping session that would take place. The planning department claims that they're familiar with AECOM, and yet this letter shows that they're not that familiar with them, and apparently. And it's one thing, and the conversation I had with you, Mark, you wanted criticism of AECOM, and you got it in spades here. What I don't like is the fact that we, Keeper Local San Rafael, are always saying no. And it doesn't feel good. If we had been invited into this process, we wouldn't be saying no. We'd be working together. So I'm concerned that if I'm, I believe Mr. Quinn said you were with the Bay Area Economic Forum. Was that true?
The Bay Area Economics.
Economics, it's a different group, so I won't make that point. The last point is this, is the appearance. I dressed tonight, today, not because I'm trying to uphold my reputation, but because of appearances. The appearance that there is some sort of impropriety going on here with AECOM, which about they're not being honest about, is concerns me. And so today, I did a lot of research as to who are the firms that could be, that we ought to talk to. One of them was mentioned, Civic Economics. I called David Morris and spoke with him, who was the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. And he mentioned also another group called CLUE, which means Community Land Use Economics. And the proprietor of that is a woman named Kennedy Smith. They're in Arlington, and I had a good, long conversation with her. One thing that this report does not do, I don't know if it's within their competence at all, I doubt that it is. One thing they do is they look at alternative uses of the land. And they've been very successful in coming up with 20 different uses, and I can give you different stories about that, 20 different uses in a variety of different areas all across the country. They're a small firm, a two-person firm in Arlington. Civic Economics has two people, one in Austin, one in Chicago. And there was a third, I can't remember offhand, oh, Planning Communities in North Carolina. I didn't speak with them, but I know that they were highly recommended. So I would urge, to finish up, that you deny this particular group tonight and throw it open, as some other people have suggested, to a public forum where the community is invited in to talk about what they have, how they will be affected by this. It's a community, it's not just businesses, it's a community, because the community will be affected by the economic impact, and they will be harshly affected by it. So I hope that you do that tonight, and thank you so much.
Thank you.